In spite of the owl, we will start the Morfest meeting on Monday, September 20. So first hybrid, which we are allowing people to join this meeting via the internet or Zoom or can call in. So I'm going to go ahead and generate public comments. And I see Steve Robbins here. Steve, would you like to share something tonight?
I would.
Why don't you come on and join us here too?
Thank you. I'd be happy to. I learned higher country than I could ever ask for. Quite right. So the committee in our last couple of meetings suggested I come on at least one specific point that I figured since I was going to be here, I could give a very short update. I don't want to take a lot of your time. I have some notes if you want to take one and pass it around. And I have a copy of our current budget and I thought also if you wanted to take one, pass it around.
And this is the RAP committee, Steve, we all know.
More Town Recreation Committee. Yes.
Can I just get off my pen or something? Oh, it's ready. Thank you. I'm sorry, Steve, go ahead.
So you have before you, I don't want to call it an agenda, just a couple of things I was going to raise too. Really the most important thing I put first. We've been in the meeting via Zoom and then outdoors for it seems like the last two years. And it's going to start to turn cold here. We're going to get hopefully one more meeting in next Monday outside of there. But at the end of October, that's not going to fly anymore unless we're going to go back to Zoom meetings, we'd like to meet in here. We did in the past before COVID and we'd like to do that again. I hand wrote in 5:30 PM, we meet the fourth Monday of each month. That would mean October 25th would be the next meeting. And if you guys can see clear that allows us to meet in here going forward, at least as long as it's safe and there's a way to do that, that's what'd be our preference. After that, we don't have any other ideas at the moment.
I don't see a problem with that.
I'm going to actually put some guidelines right here on the table.
Yep.
We'll do that and this will be available for you as well, Steve. So if you want to use this, this owl.
Is that the Zoom thing?
Yeah, it allows people to join the meeting virtually.
Okay.
Right. And they're projected up and anyway, so it's.
So we might need a little, if we need a little schooling on how to do that, that would be maybe extra credit and we could do that sidebar. But what we were hoping is that since we're going to do minutes after the next meeting, which is next week, it's always nice to be able to post where are you going to meet, how are you going to meet? And that's why I was trying to get out ahead of it so that we could count on physically meeting here. So I can round back with you outside of this setting as to key, any other procedures you want us to be aware of.
All right. Do you have, what about office entry? Do you have, does anyone have a key? How did you guys get in last time?
That's part, last time, what did we do? Like Dwayne, so there was one, Dwayne was still on the board and I don't know if somebody entrusted him with the key, honestly. I think he might, when he was in the school, he was coming over getting a key and then maybe drawing it back off. I think Chuck Burt also, when he was on the committee, helped with that. But Dwayne's no longer with us and Chuck's no longer with us. So I'm sure we can figure out another person, maybe it's trustworthy enough to get a key for a temporary amount of time to get in and out.
If somebody wants to pick it up on that day and then we'll give you an envelope and you can drop it in the drop box when you guys leave.
Like I said, whatever procedures you guys would like for entry, cleaning, whatever it is, just let us know and we'll, I'm sure we can do it.
No, it'll work fine.
The next thing on the list was the budget. I gave you a quick down, very, we've been terrible at spending our money this year. So we're well under budget and part of the reason is that we didn't spend any money on the potter parties, which I, port-a-potty rather, which I think were somehow the school covered and maybe we had some extra money from COVID or something else to do it. But just wanted you to be aware that there's still money in our budget if we need to pitch in for that. And then I put a second bullet down to our first bullet, which was when we did the trail thing, there was a matching grant of a thousand that the town had sort of committed to, I would say, or agreed to. I'm not sure if the town paid that on it. And if not, we actually had it in our budget for this year to put money to what was going to be phase two, but the riders did not get that grant. So I'll leave it to the.
Well, I'm sure I'll look into that.
I just thought it'd be a good idea to look into it as we're sort of ending, getting towards the end of the budget here. And then I put a question, an open question, that trails have been so successful that we didn't get the grant this year, but maybe it would be wise to consider the wisdom of building trails under a budget that we create under the town, at least partially. But I'm not here to wave that flag percent. The next thing on it was the Fort Sure Management Plan. That's something, a topic of discussion that we've actually been taking up for the last several months as a portion of our monthly meeting. And we'll continue to do so because we know that folks rely on us maybe for some oversight and/or input, but we don't feel like we're the driver of the process. We've said that from the start, it's really a planning commission job. It was, it's inception. They've even agreed when I talked to the folks, that they said, oh yeah, we should, we should have a joint meeting, we should do something. And then it was COVID and it was this and it was that. So I'm just here to nudge and say that, you know, we're definitely well over the 10 years and we should sort of redoing that. A note about Morfest. And I'll remind our group when we, in a note that John had said he would lead a mushroom walk and would arrange for the Metta Riders to have a bike ride. And Susan has said that she would need to pick a walk demonstration of sorts or to play.
Have you checked, checked in with the Morfest committee and that they know all about that or?
I haven't, but Meg sits on our, Meg Schultz is involved with Morfest and she in theory sits on our board, although she's missed last couple of meetings.
Well, she's been very busy with Sif Fest.
I get it.
I would suggest you reach out to the two.
Yeah, I'll tickle, I'll tickle the riders and John and everybody. Susan will be easy, it's a yes for her.
Can we talk to Leanne?
Yeah.
Or Lindsay.
Lindsay. I'll make sure they're aware, I'll make sure Leanne is in shape.
And I can poke John and Meg and Susan.
Yeah.
I just wanted, I just wanted to know, you know, there'll be some, there'll be some, some stuff.
Oh, no, it's great. But they've been, I'm glad they're really, you know, working on where things are, how things are and I'm sure they appreciate knowing.
Trails update, I just thought I'd bring some visual aids and just a quick note on the trails. Cause that's been a big part of what we've done the last couple of years. You can have a look, if you go out on the trails themselves, there's approximately 200 of these now out on our trails as trail markers, you know, instead of the paint on a tree, we decided to go with markers. And then some suggested that we didn't have enough, so we got a whole bunch more and then these arrows. And I've been out there and the trails are quite well marked at this point. I've only got a handful of each of these left. We can always order more, it's easy, we have the budget to deal with it. First people said we should mark the trails and we did, and then people said we should mark them more because we don't know where to go. So now it's, you should be able to follow the trails quite well. There's also those engraved wooden signs, if you haven't been out on the trails, there's one here that you can see an example of it. At all the trailheads and at all of the intersections, the important intersections, there's now proper wooden engraved signs that make you really feel like this is a trail system and that I'm not going to get lost and somebody's maintaining it maybe. It just makes, it just is more inviting. And we've noticed a real increase in usership. I mean, especially this lower nature trail is getting hammered. And even now up on the upper trails, I'll call it, when I used to go out, I would rarely see a body or evidence of somebody. And now I'm passed by a mountain biker or a walker almost every single time. And I see the evidence, the lawful tracks and the footprints and the dog prints. So I would tell you that trail use has really, really increased a lot in the last year. COVID made it, it might've been good timing because we were marking the trails, improving the trails at the same time, people really needed a place to go.
And I went out on it actually for the first time myself and I was really pleasantly surprised, I mean, realized what a system that we have there.
Were you able to, were you able to follow the trail pretty easily?
Yeah.
Stay on the trail?
Yeah. No, it's, it's real nice and you guys are doing a good job here and I highly recommend anyone to get out there and give it a try.
Steve, is the trail, is there trail out of South Hill?
There is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the only kind of remote trailhead I would call it, it's not here at the school. As you go right opposite the cemetery, sometimes people will park actually at the cemetery across the way. You know, next to, it's almost just across the street from Kitty Corry. And people, I see cars parked there and I see views from that trailhead actually, I really do. Cause I live on South Hill, so I'm maybe.
Yeah, I know you do.
I'm able to see it and I see people coming and going and walking the dogs and like that. I'm just going to hand this one around, I didn't make copies. This really should've been handed out at the Fort Sure Management Plan. I just wanted you to see that we had some contact with the Mountain Land Trust, Caitlin over there and she's got her head in the game. So if whenever it's appropriate, the planning commission and the board see fit, we could probably fire up that process at some point. It could be easily, it could take a year to do it, but you know, it's certainly something. It's worthwhile.
Maybe you could forward that email to Sasha so she can send it over to us.
Sure.
You know, that way it would, you know.
Yeah, that would be good.
And then the last thing on here and I'll accompany that with this. I'm going to, I'm going to step aside and take some time off the committee. It's been about five years. I let the committee know while in advance so that everybody could sort of plan, if you will, not someone to take a lot of time, but. And it's been a very effective committee. We've had incredible people with my time on it, including Michelle and Dwayne, who really inspired me a lot. I learned a lot from those guys and John Atkinson and Chris and Susan. It's a, it's a, there's a nice complex of age and male, female, I mean, it's about as good as you could ask for. I've been terrible at attracting new people, but they seem to be coming to us. And I would tell you that ideally, an odd number is good and more would be better. Seven would be ideal because just like with y'all, if you only get two or three and you have a six person board, you don't have a quorum and you can't actually pass business and approve minutes and all that good stuff. So I would prefer to see it be a seven person board and that way maybe four can show up. If three show up with a six person board, you don't have a quorum. And that's my, that's, I know it seems silly, but I've been sort of taking responsibility for all those little technical things, making agendas and passing minutes and, you know, having minutes and making sure people don't have meetings sidebar their illegal. And it's been good, people really taken to it. So that's my hope going forward is that it'll just cruise on and there'll be more great people, volunteers around that'll come in.
We'll be certainly.
How many people are on the board now?
Six. But we don't always get six, you know.
When you step down, there'll just.
There'll be five. And that's actually good in a way for the interim.
We need to find perhaps two more people. Not, we, yeah, we collect.
Yeah, there's a term, the we.
Actually, I heard about someone.
Absolutely. I actually, there was a couple names that came up and I called them repeatedly and invited them each meeting for months and, you know, you knock on that door three, four months in a row and they don't show. I'm really not a great recruiter.
Obviously.
You've had enough on your plate, but yeah, I, there's someone I can maybe mention.
Yeah. We meet Monday, this Monday, we'll be meeting outside, 5:30. I'm putting to that to go to cover out here in the field.
So that's the, what's the date on that?
27th.
A week from today.
27th.
And then the 25th, we'll be here. Sometimes we take off, in the past, December has not been a good month. A lot of years we just don't meet in the month of December, I believe, sort of, just because it's Christmas week and it's all that stuff.
We certainly want to thank you, Steve, I mean, I've heard your questions, but all the time you've put in and your professionalism, like I said, and you're striving to, as you said, put, you know, cross the T's and dot the i's as far as you're running a meeting and doing that. We appreciate that, it makes it all easier for us, but all your hard work and good on it, your energy and ideas.
It's been a pleasure, it's been, it's been a lot of fun, done some great stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm sure it'll, it'll keep going. There's a lot of good people in this town, a lot of interest in the fields and the trails and the courts, so that's it.
You know, some question came up about some stone that might've been placed by the committee on ditch line or something?
Up by the tennis courts.
Do you know, did that come from your private work or?
Probably. There was a big pile left over from the trail, from the big push at the end of last, you know, of this lower nature trail. I know that part of that was, there was a pile for the longest time down at the end of.
I also have the most concern about.
Is that what you mean?
It was concerned about drainage or something.
Yeah, well, I think you had played, there was some place in the ditch and I think it was washed out, washed down into the drainage. I just slipped through my phone, I had a picture of it, but I don't know if my phone's in the spot.
I think the project would take care of it. Unless we're just trying to determine what the source was, maybe we could, the chance it was.
It sounds like it was, but I'd be happy to meet with anybody or I could also, I would probably bring in a combination of John.
Or the work group take, take care of it and kind of find out where the source was and maybe it's probably these guys and just say, all right, in the future, if you put it in, make sure you use it heavier stuff or whatever happens to be.
Was it from the drive on the way up to the courts, right there, you mean?
You know, I, I got a picture, but I really wasn't sure.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to address it in any way that you guys see fit. Happy to put eyes to it, bring in whoever and explain it. The reason I can't answer 100% is, you know, the work was sort of subbed out to this trail company, if, if it was part of that work. And there was a little bit after the fact and then there was some volunteers, Kingsbury and others who have said, hey, we had a machine, we can help. Which is, you know, we're always in the climate, Metta Riders, inclined to say, yes, people are volunteering time machines, but I do want to be respectful and manage that, you know, the land as best as we can.
Steve, check into what we're hanging.
I will. Feel free to reach out anytime. And I'll be happy to reach out there and put eyes to it. Okay. I'm always close by and I'm not going anywhere, you guys, so.
What's up here?
Great.
Anything else for Steve?
Would you like a retirement?
I'll take one for the road. And with thanks.
Anybody.
Who's ready?
I think Zach.
Sasha. Are you retiring already?
Retired last Thursday.
Congratulations and thank you for your service.
My goodness. On the 67th Friday, I figured that was a good time for me to retire.
Good for you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Well deserved.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of a weird feeling, but you know, ready to move on to something else?
I aspire to.
How about pizza with a weekend? I like that.
We can pizza.
Thank you all for your time.
Hey, thank you, Steve, nice to see you. How are you, Steve? Appreciate you coming. All right. So moving on, I haven't seen any other people here, public comments. And it doesn't look like we have anyone that's joined on the Zoom. So let's go ahead and move on. We have errors and omissions. Now this comes from Nemrick or the New England Municipal Honor Resource Center. I just heard that on the radio the other day, I was always wondering what Nemrick stood for. There it is. And so we have errors and omissions and what these are, obviously, I mean, it's different errors that have come through on the grant list that Nemrick picked up on. Does everyone want to take a look at them or shall I just, I'll, I'll state the first one. We have Sandy Ray and it's just a change of ownership. That's the only thing that we need to change there. Then we have Kruzinski family, a change from 600 to 5,200 to 557, 500. And the reason is they sold off 62, 68.2 acres to Ludwig. And then the next change is a change to Ludwig for that 68,000, or pardon, purchase of the 68 acres for 176,000. So there's actually an increase there. The next one we have is H&amp;H Real Estate and.
I can't explain that.
Oh, yeah.
Cause it's zero now. Vermesters bought the remaining, what, H&amp;H had?
It's where it was though.
It was contiguous, it was right next to H&amp;H, it's not a bid that they had. And part of that land is very steep and not buildable. So it changed the grade in the grading system that they do for, it's non-buildable stuff. So Vermesters bought that section and it added, what was it, 90,000?
90,000 to the next.
To theirs.
Okay. So that change on H&amp;H Real Estate stayed at 442. Vermesters went from 273 to 3, to 363, 100 and that's because of the extra acreage that they got, that's non-buildable. The next error or admission was to the best partners, 6366, ownership change there. No change as far as value. The next, we have an ownership change again, Zachary Bosier. And that's again, no value changes, the life estate ownership. Change. The next change we have is again, it's just an ownership, it's a life estate deed. Paul and Matthew Nato, they're just remaining owners on that deed. Green Mountain Power, they had a change, it started at 2,359,000 and then changed to There's a change difference of 166,500. The reason, the total utility assessment, the CIA, was not applied correctly. And there's an attachment here, we can, we'll come back if you like. And we have a second Green Mountain Power that was changed from 7,369,400 to 6,890,500. Change of 478,900. And again, the total utility assessment, CLA was not, not applied. The next change we had was Patton, Ronald and Sandra. And it's just a daily deed change, it was an executor's deed from the Zili. So those are the changes, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
She's got 15 more to go, still working on.
So there was 12 that they have picked up on. Now these are all things that probably should have, some of them picked up by the listers, but because of the lister issues that we've experienced, that's why it fell to Nemrick. So is there a motion to approve these changes?
I make a motion to approve those changes.
Is there a second?
A second.
One question's on, how does, what, how does that affect the grant list? It has an effect on the right, it reduces it or increases it or whatever. We've already set the tax rate now, but what, what happens with that?
It goes up and down, whatever happens with each one of those. And she said, once you guys approve them, the notices go out and those people have 14 days to grieve those.
Right. But what I, yeah, what I'm saying though is if we set a tax.
Grant list will.
If the grant list is less and our tax rate is odd, then we're already kind of, we've got the same.
In the hole there.
Yeah. But when we make it up the next year, we.
Yeah, I'll come through, it'll come through the next year, but yeah.
It's probably coming, it's something that's got it.
And usually there are not the omissions that we've seen here. Well, as I said, usually this is happening now twice with Green Mountain Power. Where, you know, this is, if I was to, this is three quarters of a million dollars. So that's real money on.
Yeah, that is real money right there.
So there will be, there could be a bit of a next year where things will be off, if you will, because we're going to make that up.
Yeah.
But that's why it's really important that we have the listers that can do the job. And that's why I think with our switching to Nemrick, I think it's really the way to go, because then you won't see this, I mean, again, especially with Green Mountain Power. And Don, I think you had just gotten on the board, but we've had this happen before and actually Green Mountain paid the bill. They didn't even realize it was a problem, that's how big they are. And it becomes, in fact, we're still holding that, if you look in the, your book or yearly book, we still have that because Green Mountain has not gotten back with us on that.
I mean, did they, would they, when they get the notice, did they object, did they, did they have a process where they objected to that or?
They should have, they did not.
The last time, but then again, they might.
They did last time, maybe this time. So, which again, that surprises me too, but that's not.
Well, given per the rules of regs, then maybe they just figured that's the way it is.
Exactly, they're getting it and they think it's, you know, leave this and, you know, we're continuing to make mistakes on it, so. Any other questions? All in favor, go ahead.
What?
She was amazing, I better tell you. Cassandra DiTillio, she came here and she spent the whole day.
I'm going to say that right.
And she just was back and forth looking at surveys and.
And she's from Nemrick?
Yep, she came down, yes, from Nemrick. She came down and spent one whole day and she plans on doing that.
And what was it again?
Cassandra DiTillio.
Great. Here's, oh, that's her name. All right, so we've got there. So let's take just some of your, is that not the one? Oh, okay. All right. All right, so we have reports, communication, communications, thank you, announcements and then we'll look at the documents later. So Sasha, start with the little reports.
I just need Sharon to give me a reminder about the grant stuff for you to refer to there so you don't forget.
Okay, we'll be able to do business and we'll do that, make sure you don't forget there.
I talked to Stefan this week, he said that Capital Fire Mutual Aid is going to be having an upcoming meeting and they're going to ask the fire chief and a select board member to attend. So something to think about.
When, when is that?
They don't have it set yet, but he was told about it, so he wanted to just, food for thought for you guys.
Just think about that, if anyone knows, if they're like wanting to work with fire thing.
It's the fire department and it's the.
Fire chief and one select board member, they're having a big meeting and.
The state fire marshal.
Capital Fire Mutual Aid, it's, it's the dispatching.
So that would be good to make sure someone is there.
Is it a day, a day on thing?
I think it's going to be like a night, night meeting.
You think it's going to be a Zoom meeting or?
I think it is.
Oh. Keep it in mind.
Okay. And he said that he picked up the farm dogs again Sunday, brought them home.
And for all the settlements?
Yeah, it's going to work tomorrow. He's also reached out to the LCT so that, the LCT to get help on the ordinance. So he has actually reached out and done that. Planning Commission vacancy. Clark Emadon sent a letter of interest.
Who was that, I didn't know it was you.
Sorry.
Clark Emadon.
Oh, great.
Clark, he was not here.
I haven't known him before.
He's not there, you can watch out.
He's all right. Doesn't know how to catch fish. Except for the planning commission, is that what?
Yeah. Have we had any other inquiries into, into the planning commission? Haven't, so we've got one. And we often have people in that are, you know, for these type of positions, but I know you've served with Clark and I know you know him well, he served with me on the board.
The town hall committee.
Yeah, the town hall committee. I think we probably appoint him to the planning commission.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
So I moved that, appoint Clark to the planning commission. So I move that we uh appoint Clark to the planning commission, Clark Emman.
Can I second that?
Thank you. No further questions, all in favor, go ahead.
All right.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah, he is, he'll be good for that.
Yeah.
Um there's a DRV hearing for the town on September thirtieth. Um Cheryl said that one of the select board members would probably want to be there. It's for the stormwater.
All right.
What day of the week is that?
Thursday. Tuesday?
No.
No, twenty seventh is-
Twenty third day.
Thursday night.
It's only nine in the week, I can't make it on Thursday.
It's poker night, you know that?
It's a card night.
Is the meetings here?
Yes. They're doing Zoom and here. Um.
Um it's about the uh-
The retention of the uh the bio retention.
Yeah, for the-
The storm being-
Storm, yes, yeah.
Oh, for the parking lot?
Yeah.
So I mean, John, okay, well, which-
John, or I think you were John.
Should be John or I am, he's been on top of it as well, but-
Yeah, he's not here, that's the-
He's on the way.
All in total.
All in total.
And have you heard anything about the Warren unit, have you talked to Joe?
I haven't been able to reach Joe, I you know, I've been trying to do other things, but uh what I've really looking for is, you know, I will get together with Joe and get a budget number. Obviously, we're not gonna be doing anything with you anyways.
Okay.
So before budget time, I'll 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 have it all straightened out with Joe.
Okay. And I'm probably gonna have another warrant either tomorrow or Wednesday so that we can get all the checks out for my checks. Um would you possibly be around to-
Yeah, just make sure you text me when you send an email because it-
Yep.
Yeah, there's a lot of email, I can, it's easy if you need a sheet down here.
Sasha, Brian's very good.
All right, the last thing was AT&T, the road crew phone, well, Martin's phone, has been having some odd late fee charges. The guy told Cheryl today after she'd been on hold and transferred like five times, um that the package we have is going up. So we're wondering if, just to brainstorm, if we could pay the phone off. And Stefan has a special grant to AT&T for the fire department, which would save a lot of money. And he had told us that he could get Martin's phone on it because he's kind of an essential order.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that you guys-
Yeah, we're looking it up, yeah.
Yes. That's all I have.
So I may write what you have.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
No, Don, do you have anything for uh course communications?
No, I don't really have anything, no.
All right, well, just a couple little things that I had, um we'd have a call from a Susan Smith. And she lives up on the common road and concerned with water coming into her property. So I need to give you the address I had in the car, I'll exit door to you, but if you could check it, how about that? I don't know, you know, she spoke a little bit about it, but I don't think there's really anything that we can do. But I don't know if there was anything changed, she thought there was all of a sudden, there was a change and there's a lot of water coming under her property. So um I don't think there was anything ditching up that way, but uh you know, the water events that we have nowadays, it really, all of a sudden, it just goes anywhere.
Yeah, really changes, yeah.
Yeah, so um I think as far as uh speak with anyone outside, such that is it. Um have a few things for later orders, but we have uh announcements, again, we have Morfest coming up this weekend. Um so I hope everyone can make it, it's uh fire department over there with uh corn and french fries they're making. And uh near Eric is doing a picnic.
Hey.
And uh the more town store donated, they donated the money for that. Um and there'll be all sorts of other activities, so we look forward to everyone getting there. And also, isn't this Callie's weekend, isn't she doing a a challenge down there in South?
I think so.
A fitness challenge, so if you don't come to Morfest, go support Callie down there, the fitness challenge down there, Iron Women or whatever the-
I wonder, can we send a note out to the, well, I guess most of the committees, they don't, you know, to committee chairs or something, telling them to remind all their committee members of Morfest or something, you know, just-
Yeah, I think that, you know, I mean-
Something like that, just yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, a lot of different committees in town, maybe someone just might, might not know about it or something.
Yeah, makes sense. So we're looking forward to that, and there's fireworks and bands and all sorts of things, I think, it'll be good stuff.
It looks like the weather's gonna be okay too.
Yeah, yeah. Uh you know, like Steve's people are doing some things and uh Corey, uh they have, in fact, they already have something started, some kind of uh-
A dragon egg hunt.
Dragon egg hunt, so carefully assuming dragon eggs out here. All right, so let's go ahead, um there's three of us here, so we can go ahead and approve the select word minutes from uh the seventh, September seventh.
I make a motion for the minutes, September seventh.
All right, uh Don, is there something? All in favor, all right.
All right.
Thank you, nice folks, I'm sorry everyone wasn't here for that meeting, but I had a good minutes, and since you guys had a good, good meeting and a good conversation with the sergeants and such, the folks that came in on the ATV, it sounded like Callie had uh did a good job there.
Well, she did.
You too, right. Um let's go ahead and move on to old business. All right, um service officers, well, we've we've filled one tonight, we have the um, not the service officer, but the planning commission. Now, did we decide whether we needed that service officer? Or was there any question that we, that was posed us?
I think it used to be, and a question that's posed to you guys, um it is not necessary anymore. So if you guys wanted to just do away with it and just, you can't.
What do they do anyways?
They assist, like people that need assistance, um helping them fill out forms that they need help with, that type of thing.
That's kind of nice to have, if we had someone to do it. Isn't that similar to the the group that Cheryl and you and-
Yeah, anyone who works would help.
Right. Well, why don't, keep it on there, let me talk to you guys, maybe we can decide that one of you guys is all right, I'm gonna be the service officer out of that group, so that it is official, in case, who knows, you know, sometimes there's opportunities they all and, you know, there's a um title like that. It's easier for people to to reach out to me. CB Fiver or CB Fiver? Um thanks for approving uh the lawyer, um as far as taking a look at it, as Ron couldn't. He did get back with us, he he said he didn't see anything wrong with the uh in the way. So um but I want you to continue with having yet, make sure you look at the guidance that we have on how to spend this money. You know, or I shouldn't say the guidance, the the garden rails of of this money. And I know, I think Ray, there was a comment you had somewhere where uh you questioned the amount, we were looking at CB Fiver. So you know, our next meeting, we'll talk about that.
Yeah. When are they, when are they, is the next?
It'll be the next meeting, it originally was going to be here or this one, but because we hadn't gotten that lawyer stuff back yet, I didn't wanna go ahead with that.
So if you want us to read a little, just refresh our, you know, the recovery act.
On the recovery act, that way you get, um you'll be coming with ideas or anyone else, or someone else has an idea, you know, we kind of know already. You can't, you can't do that type of thing, so we're not wasting a ton of time, kind of rolling the rules over here. Um and they may, by that time, there may be some other things that we have uh that would fit under that, that we're looking at.
Yeah, maybe some stuff at the town hall, I feel that for sure.
Right, so there's lots of different things that uh you may, and if you look at that and read it more, there's ways to wiggle around things or or-
finesse.
How I finesse, that's that's another word, that's the word, I didn't like wiggly either.
It's a little tough.
Yeah, uh finesse, uh so we can do that. And with CB Fiver, one of the, you know, think of questions you might want, you know, you might have for that. Because we're in touch in here, uh we wanna make sure you get those answered. I've come up with a couple of others that I think we should look into. Uh I've talked to uh uh Waysfield Telecom, uh because they're, CB Fiver is is doing an agreement with them. But knowing, you know, Waysfield Telecom served our town for a long time, and he's got a lot here. So I wanna make sure that they're on board too.
Absolutely, that's-
So before, you know, we really make any huge decisions, I thought it might be good, I know you're feeling from maybe everyone else here, about maybe getting those guys to come, someone from uh Waysfield Telecom.
Cause you did mention about using them, you know, trying to work with them.
Right, and so I wanna make sure there's a good relationship there, I don't want, you know, um you know, one thing on the back of my mind is, you know, if I'm gonna give seventy-five thousand, a hundred thousand, whatever it is, to CB Fiver, why wouldn't I do it to Waysfield Telecom?
I thought exactly, Don, you led my mind seriously.
The guys on the road that've done everything, so I, I mean, I'm not saying that's what, but that's just a question I have, like, what's up with that? You know, and so I'm expecting CB Fiver to reach, so it's a good softball question, it's not softball question, but a heads up for.
Yeah.
Those are the type of things.
Historically, they that they developed lines of business in a whole different realm to get to where they are now. You know, they had, there was the telephone-
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Service, and then it was cable, and you know, and then into the internet and stuff, so this is, I mean, I'm not, I'm just, help me understand. CB Fiver is trying to come along and get to areas that have, that have no, no service provided, be it Waysfield Telecom or I don't know.
Right, so what my thought is, then why wouldn't you, all right, so Waysfield Telecom comes to here, then why wouldn't they come to here and we'll pay for that?
Oh, use Way and help them, give them, exactly, I understand.
Help them build out, not just to-
Do they have any interest in doing that, and yeah, here we could help, we could participate in funding that.
Right.
There you go.
So, um and I don't know, but I, so I did reach out and I spoke to Roger Neesh. We'll talk real quick, and there is interest to get, I just wanted to see if they'd have interest to come to a meeting. At the time, I said they would see me by-
I wonder why they never really made me consider that.
You know, who knows, they may, again, maybe because the way that they've always conducted business has not been that way. You know, they've always scratched out themselves and figured it out, so.
But some of this is in the two-two-nine area, it's not in Waysfield Telecom's area.
But what makes it their area?
Well, you know what I mean, the, like, your, who's your phone provider for the phone service and?
It's uh, it's uh, it's-
What?
Comcast. Comcast.
I mean, it's not a a valid per se number, it's a different provider, you know. And the, so I wonder if they feel like they can't go into that zone.
There may, there may be that, and that's a good question to ask.
Yeah.
Um yeah, so I just think it's more questions, things that would come up with like that.
Yeah.
Just so we've done, I I think it's very important that we get fiber to everyone. And I just wanna make sure that we do it the best way.
Yes.
You know, and whether it's CB Fiver or these guys or, you know, is it, you know, I don't think it would hurt us to reach out and just find out what type of, does Comcast, is that the other person, is that the other group that serves on this side?
Yeah, well Comcast, well, I know they won't come to the crowd, road. I don't know how far, do they go down River Road, do you know Comcast?
That's what I'm curious, they used to be Fairpoint, but what is it now, whatever that something communication.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Which is interesting, I'd be interested to know if they have any other planes to operate. Do you remember that's something you could pick on Sasha, try to find? Um you know, there's gonna be a
Is it consolidated communication?
Consolidated, yeah.
I know they would put cable down the road as well, I have no idea what their plans are. But I don't, I think some people on the road have wanted them and not been that happy with them. And that's what my concern is, that, you know, once you have service, the the game doesn't end there, you know.
That's where it starts, the game starts.
You know, there's a lot of maintenance, a lot of, you know, people, systems break down, you gotta have somebody they can call. And that's what's good, I think, about Waysfield.
That's right, and say on the other side, I think they were, Chuck was talking about that parting agreement with uh Washington Electric, is that correct?
Well, I heard him say he was gonna try to work with uh Waysfield Telecom.
I thought I heard him say Washington Electric as well.
Yeah, that was the one that they were in, so I'd be interested to look and learn about that agreement as well. Uh because if if they're having an agreement with them, Washington Electric's putting in all the infrastructure um per their agreement, then there's, we're just supplementing Washington Electric, I don't wanna do that either. So I I think that's important, that we take a look at those agreements to make sure that um where all that money goes if we do decide to to go that route. ATA audience, you guys worked on that, Little Trails, Cheryl, I know, has been um trying to work with Shems and um, oh.
Tarrant?
Yeah, Tarrant and Shems on Little Trails, World Morals, uh Ray, you got that in the wood. Uh one thing I don't see on here, but I wanna cover is our grant stuff with the um town roar, I know, Don, you got-
Oh, I was gonna bring that up, but I didn't know if I should wait for the new business.
Oh, old business, you can go ahead and talk about that.
Well, no, so I got Brad gave, sent a letter of advice that he'd even Sasha and Stefan, and I got stuff from the electrician. And I sent that off to Brad this morning. He totally feels that we can use the fourth, you know, the the efficiency of our grant four thousand, we can use for the lighting, so we're good on that. And um of course, I got a way message, and he will be back to his office, I think, Wednesday, Thursday, so he'll respond with his emails. But he's also gonna be in Morfest.
Okay.
So, you know, you'll get a chance to say hello, they're gonna have a little thing there, I guess.
So we had, we had bids on the electrical car in the, you know, in-
On the condensation.
Condensation.
I haven't heard anything back.
So that's something we're gonna have to look in separately, but I forget what the bid was for, for the electrical car.
Eight, eight thousand.
Eight thousand, of which we think we're gonna use four thousand for the way, so. But uh, yeah, so we have to pursue the-
Oh, we really should stay on top of that, cause it's only gonna get worse.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to think of some other contractors to reach out to.
You know, I, I would have talked more on that, so. I will, I'll reach out to, yeah, well.
Yeah, because if they were the builders, then maybe they could be more efficient working on it, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you, guys, gentlemen, for getting that done, keep it round.
Uh keep it round.
Any other old, I see here that we have timeline things that we're working on that need to be?
Well, I would say only one old business item is on the town hall, with, you know, regardless, you know, we're gonna have to think to fit without, regardless of all the stuff. One thing that I really think we should start to look into and reach out is, is finding an engineer and doing a proper sort of study on the water mitigation and the, you know, parking lot and and such, you know. Because no matter what happens, that really needs, there's been water events this summer. Uh, Mark's been down there cleaning out that little drainage thing there by the door, three or four times already, it's not working. And, um, so, you know, some, a, a firm that'll come in here, and then we can start to deal with, you know, moisture in the basement, some mold, or not mold, or funky air and stuff, you know.
Yeah, I agree, we need to figure out what the problem is there.
I mean, that, that's a, I mean, the lift, and the this, and the that, and all the other stuff, we're gonna, that'll, that's coming, but that, we gotta, to keep our building.
Do you have any ideas on who would be a good person to look at, or you're trying to figure that out, or?
Someone to carry cargo, um.
Yeah, a farmer, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, there's stuff locally around here.
I wonder if Stone Environmental could do that, do they?
Uh, they're, they're more, I mean, they could do it, but I don't think, you know, I think somebody like Brittany Air, or, um, The Wolf is another local one. There's a few local ones, I think.
Well, I, just because, why don't we take a look at, um, our budgets, what we have for money?
Maybe we just make some sort of RFP.
Yeah.
Some sort.
Put that out there, but I don't know when, actually, we should probably go ahead and do a RFP for that, it's not something that anyone's gonna really jump on and do this fall anyways, I think. Uh, so if we get something out, and maybe that is something that you could work with Sasha on.
I got to take that something on to town hall. The basement guy did meet with him, I'm waiting for a PDF with his findings, he said if the elevator stays where it is, they could put a grate in there, like, when you're going towards the elevator, and that would eliminate that issue right there in that corner.
That, that's a problem we're having now, is without it being paid, the grates are getting full of.
She's saying inside.
Inside.
Oh, inside.
Yeah, on the inside of, like, in the basement, you go around the corner to go towards the elevator, there's a whole section in the floor, he said that should have a grate in it. So that, that is one problem that they could fix, but he thinks that a really big industrial dehumidifier would work a lot of that stuff out. But I haven't got prices or anything from him back yet.
Alright, yeah, when he gets that report, I'll be interested to see that, um, we can still work on.
Yeah, engineer, again, area, yeah, just to figure that out. Yeah, and you're probably right, by the time that gets out, and we get some prices, and then they look at it, we could even maybe put it in the budget.
In the budget, that's what I'm thinking, but let's get it, so.
Yeah, let's get the ball out of that road, right.
Because, yeah, it's been a couple of years, and it's, and it's a great building, that basically could be very useful.
Yeah.
But the issue is not going to be.
So that was like, like, what is this?
Okay. What is this old business? Yeah. So, as far as other old business things, or other things, Sasha, that we have to, I'm trying to spot the end of this year, is there anything else that, and when we already talked about this, I don't think there's any else that we have more on.
Closer to the Robert Turner thing, um, the road maintenance system, um, the trailer endorsements, that hasn't been talked about in a while.
Alright, so that's.
They have, they have.
I'm sorry, the trailer?
Trailer endorsements on their driver's license, um, to pull the trailer that we have in, you know, and, it's actually been a couple of years now, and we've been, promised that, so we need to find out what the story is there, and then figure out how best to get that done, to make sure it's done finally. Alright, um, new business, oops.
Alright, one, I'm sorry, one last, I, I just saw my notes, so, it's great that we have the hours, and I think that's gonna help a lot of people, so. So I was just wondering, should we try to publicize it?
Yeah.
Put something in the, in front porch forum, or the Valley Reporter, or something, it's great that we have the, this forum.
Yeah, I think behind the front porch forum would probably be the idea, and also, I think, I was gonna talk to Sasha about this, one thing, there is a, it's six o'clock, I don't know, I'm no, I'm trying to call a call right there, it's at six thirty, but, um, up here in the title, even, we'll, we can work, so the hybrid, I get it, we all get it, but, you know, make sure that we state, uh, you know, the board's meeting, not at seven-nine Sulu Street, the Hoka Bo meeting room. However, or if you're more comfortable, however you wanna word that, you can join us via Zoom, and then the address, just so that really people are aware.
Yeah, I called Sasha this morning, because I was confused, I thought the whole, he was going.
Yeah.
But I was just thinking, it'd be good to just, yeah, that's to make people aware, like, a little notice on the front porch forums.
No, I think that's a good idea, we'll, uh, it'll maybe a, a week before our next meeting or something, we can do that, and then warn the meeting, we'll rewind it as well.
So right now, if somebody were to call in, it'd come up on the screen, if they had a camera, and we could talk, just like a Zoom meeting.
Right.
And they could see, oh, it's here.
And as you talk.
Yeah, I guess her was saying, as I thought, what?
You could, like, center stage.
Or maybe, Ray, if someone's in the audience, or, you know, part of the, there, we'll go to them as well.
Okay. Looks pretty split.
Yeah, looks pretty well.
It is nice. Look, there is, we split three ways right there.
Yeah.
Got that thing up. Um, alright, so for new business, I'll start off with, there's an opportunity, uh, for a grant, for a scoping study, um, which I thought, actually, that Cheryl Lynn, the one that came up with it, or approached me with it, uh, for a sidewalk on the other side of town. And, so before you can get a grant to do the sidewalk, you need to do a, because in those grants, they ask for scoping studies. So this is a grant for a scoping study that we could do on Route Two, you know, Fairgrounds Road, uh, in the, the development that's over there.
Yeah.
So, it seems like a fairly straightforward, um, grant, um, so I just wanna make sure that you guys are aware.
Yeah, and Joyce Manchester sent that letter, cause she got some positive feedback, you know, you got a letter from, I mean, she's been chatting with different people at the state who felt that that was very doable, as far as the right of way, the amount of space, and being able to do it, but you're right, you have to do a.
Yeah, it has to be, and this will, I think we can get that, and then, um, obviously, the next thing down the road will be the, a grant, hopefully, for more sidewalks for that area, which that would be very good, and I think would be an easy, not an easy grant to get, but something that you could really show a need for. Um, the other grant that Cheryl Lynn, um, asked if we wanted to reply for, was a grant for the parking lot, and it was a block grant. And there was a, a match on it. Lot. And then she got that from Pam Deandrea, but I thought we didn't pull that, the parking lot, or, not the parking lot, pardon me, the, um, uh, the project here, the, the drainage and everything, I thought that, that project, they pulled that, that was taken care of.
Uh, that's my understanding, the, the drainage part.
Is all done?
The design is what she said.
What's that?
The design part was all taken care of, the.
But I thought we had funding for the whole construction.
I, yeah.
Yeah, because of some change out here, they were, couldn't do that, but they could do this.
We don't.
As far as she said today, which she told Tom, they.
Cause she, she asked me that, and I said, I said, no, I, I mean, that does not sound right, you were hit, to your point, um, remember when you went to Ray Dagle, and we were talking to him, and we were like, well, you know, we've got some good news, you know, that whole project is taken care of.
The whole drainage part.
The drainage part, it was, I mean, I, I know I wasn't hearing that.
Yeah. It was, she wanted that, so that was all.
Right, with John.
What's that?
John, maybe, would know some more about that as well.
He might. I, I get, I know what I heard, and I heard that we had funding for the whole project, not just the design part of it.
Yeah. And, we had a call, Pam, or where, where was it all come from, right? I, I think, I think Cheryl Lynn had told us.
I think Pam was here, Pam.
Pam.
I mean, we had, or maybe it was a call, I thought it was right here.
Zoom meeting.
Was it a Zoom meeting, okay. Oh, we should, we should maybe go back to find it. Obviously, earlier this year, somewhere around the line.
Cause, uh, yeah, I'm very sure that that's what we'd heard. Maybe we had a miscommunication, you know, or whatever, but we need to figure that out before we can start looking at the grants, right?
Yes. I mean, it, obviously, it doesn't cover the parking lot reconstruction.
Right.
Other than the drains, maybe that's the grant that she's talking about, that was great.
It was, no, um, I, I don't, I don't think so, I think she, so we'll have to do some digging, and even talk to Ray, I mean, I know often we said to Ray, I think, I, I very clearly remember talking to him about it, saying, hey, we got something we knew, because of, uh, what happened here, they were doing something else for us. Um, so we'll go ahead and go and do the scoping, um, uh, grant, or apply for that.
We did have that bathroom, right, we had that bathroom early this year, right, we met up. Were you part of?
I don't know, I'm not here, no.
John, and, but we walked up, you know, around the buildings, and this is back in April. And, you know, I thought at that time, it was in the design phase, but I thought it was really clear that we were really funding for the whole entire project.
Do you remember who was there, you know, John?
Uh, John Dagle, um, Andre, Megan Hare was here, and John, and I, I think maybe Martin was here too. I'm pretty sure.
Would, would, would John, the guy, was that a guy from the state?
There was another, there was another person there from the state.
I wonder if someone.
Chris one?
Chris, I just think it was Chris.
No, it wasn't Chris, it was, I don't remember who the other person was.
Cause maybe they took some meetings or something.
Yeah, but I guess, I think, the, what we were told, I think we went down on a Zoom meeting, cause I think I was there, it wasn't, I didn't hear a second hand from.
Yeah.
Anyone, I heard it. Cause I wouldn't, I don't talk about it, or tell Ray about it, cause Ray Dagle was, he was not present at the meeting that that was announced, or that we told that, cause I told him. And if he was at, it's walk around, and we would have done that. Alright, so let's move forward, any other new business? Sasha, do you have anything else here? We have a couple of ones to sign, um, so let's go ahead and do this, let's see if John came in and. And then I do, or we need to, um, go into executive session, uh, briefly, for, uh, an employee. Yes, um, and I will go on that in a minute, but, so let's get these. Alright, so yeah, well, I, um, moved, I would go into executive session for, um, it's actually one B, it's, uh, labor, or relations with employees. Or actually, no, uh, four A. And then let's leave it at one A, our one B, pardon me, is that it goes into different ones, it's employee family, depending on where this goes.
Right, how's that?
Ray, second that, and, uh, any other questions, if no other questions, I'll pivot right, and it'll just be the board, so.